This conference will now be recorded.
There we go.
Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we are recording. So, the hearing will please come to order. Good morning, I'm John Galt, the Sammamish Hearing Examiner. It is now 10:06 a.m. on June 19, 2020. And I welcome you to this morning's remote open record hearing on the application of Shay Beal under file number SSDP2019-00585, a substantial development permit application for construction of a dock in Lake Sammamish. My introductory remarks today will be longer than normal because we're holding this hearing remotely due to the restrictions necessitated by the current COVID-19 pandemic. I apologize ahead of time for the length of these remarks, but I believe they're necessary to preserve everybody's due process rights. Today's hearing is being conducted remotely using a software program called GoToMeeting. People may participate in this hearing by computer with audiovisual capabilities or by telephone. This hearing is being recorded by a system that's built into the GoToMeeting program. The system records both audio and video, so all computer attendees need to keep that in mind. I'm the presiding officer, but Ms. Beatty of city staff is serving as the organizer. She has a few extra capabilities than the rest of us do as just mere attendees. One of the things that she can do is turn on and off your microphone whether you want it on or off. So if I ask her to turn somebody's on, she can do it if you're not quick enough to get it on yourself. We are starting with everybody's microphone turned off except mine. And we're doing that to keep down the background noise on the recording, to keep me from hearing any private comments that you may make to other people in the room with you that I shouldn't hear and that shouldn't be part of the record. And just simply to keep things moving as best we can under the circumstances. Each witness in our hearing is a party of record. Attendees, even if they don't speak, can also become a party of record. We normally have a form available right there in the hearing room for you to enter your name and contact information to become a party of record. Obviously, we don't have that capability today. Up until a couple of minutes ago when we actually started the hearing, there was a notice board on the screen that you all had a chance to see that provided the email address for Ms. Lita Hatchey, who's attendee number six showing on my screen. And she's the deputy city clerk, and she is the person to whom you would send your contact information to become a party of record. I have the feeling that everybody who is participating here, I don't know who attendee seven is yet, or do I? Yes, well, Mr. Peterson has moved, so he's no longer attendee seven. Anyway, I have the feeling that all of you know her email address, so I'm not going to belabor that any further. The city would appreciate it if everybody were willing to accept notice of decision, mailing, et cetera via email. If that's okay with you, then please put your email address on when you send your contact information to Lita. There was, as there always is, an opportunity for anybody to submit written comments at any time prior to today's hearing. Any comments received in that standard fashion will shortly be entered into the hearing record by me. At that time, they will become exhibits. In an in-person hearing, attendees may also submit written materials in person during the hearing. That's obviously physically impossible to do in a remote hearing setting such as this one. Therefore, as we go along, I will ask each participant whether he or she has any written materials that they would have submitted if this hearing were being held in person today. If anyone indicates a desire to do so, I will keep the record open to provide an opportunity for hearing attendees to submit written comments after the hearing. If we need to hold the record open, I will explain that process just before we wrap up the hearing. A shoreline substantial development permit is a type four application as classified by the city. Type four applications require an open record pre-decision here, or excuse me, pre-decision hearing before the examiner, which is what we're here to do today. After that, I have up to 10 working days in which to reach and issue a written decision. My decision will be a final decision for the city, subject to the right of reconsideration and appeal to the state shorelines hearings board. I include a paragraph at the end of the decision briefly explaining the reconsideration process and another one explaining the appeal process, so I won't go over that at this time. Our hearing today will be structured as it would be if we were meeting there in person at City Hall. The hearing is basically divided into a section for direct testimony, then an opportunity for rebuttal testimony, and then an opportunity for optional closing statements. The direct testimony and the rebuttal testimony portion of the hearing proceed in the same sequence, and that is the applicant or the applicant's representative will speak first, the city staff will speak second, and then any members of the general public will speak third. It appears to me that we have no members of the general public with us at this point. If that holds true, when we get to that point, we'll just skip over that and continue on. Closing statements are optional, and they are available first to the staff and then to the applicant. I'm required to base my decision primarily on the review criteria set out in the municipal code for shoreline substantial development permits. Those criteria with respect to docks are found in section 25.07.050 of the city code. In addition to those specific criteria, I do consider any other relevant provisions and requirements of the city code, provisions of state laws and rules, judicial precedent, all applied to the facts that are disclosed by the testimony and the evidence that is entered into the record of our hearing today. I reserve the right to take official notice of applicable case law, provisions of state law and rules, and provisions of the city code. Does anybody have any questions regarding hearing procedures? No, thank you. Are there any objections on jurisdictional grounds or concerns regarding conflict of interest? Hearing none, we will move right along. I made a site familiarization visit yesterday, so I am generally familiar with the site and with the lay of the land in the immediate vicinity. My site visit was conducted entirely from, what's it called, East Lake Sammamish Shore Lane, I think it is. I did not enter onto the private property of the Beals. If I understood where the property lines are in the area, I think I was on the property of the owner to the north because the little gravel drive goes up to a gate. And I think when I was in front of that gate, I was actually on their property because I'd gone beyond the fence line along the north side of the Beal property. But other than that, I was not on private property. I tell you that because from where I was, I couldn't see the shoreline. I never saw the point where the water touched the shore, nor could I really see an angle enough to see where the dock probably would be. I think my angle of viewing was too much truncated by the residence that's under construction. All of that actually probably doesn't matter because I don't go to a site before the hearing so I can come in and testify about what I saw in front of myself. I go rather so that I have a mental image of the area, and it helps me better understand your testimony. So bottom line, if there are things important about the site and the surroundings that you think I need to know, make sure that information gets into the record through documents or through your testimony. I've mentioned documents. The city staff prepared a staff report for this application, and they marked it as exhibit number one. And then they marked 24 other items from the application file as exhibits two through 25. These 25 exhibits are listed on page two of that staff report. And I have the feeling that probably everybody in attendance this morning has received a copy of that. If so, you've had a chance to see what those exhibits are. So I will, without further ado, then enter into the record prefilled exhibits one through 25. Okay. Mr. Beal, is Mr. Irwin going to be your spokesperson to start out your presentation this morning? His mic is still off. There it is.
Both Mr. Peterson and Mr. Irwin are representing us.
Very good. Thank you. Then, as between you two gentlemen, who wants to start? Mr. Irwin or Mr. Peterson? I don't care. You guys pick one. Mr. Irwin, you're talking, but your mic is off. You can turn your mic on if you click, I think, if I remember how this works. Yeah, just click on the little microphone symbol in the left corner of your picture, and that will turn your mic on or off. Still can't hear you, Mr. Irwin?
I'm also attempting to unmute Mr. Irwin, and the system seems to be locking up. Bear with me. I don't know why this isn't working. Lita, have you had any experience with this system?
I think he should be able to-
Can you guys hear me? How about now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back on again. Isn't this fun?
Oh, he's muted again.
I figure by the time we all become experts at this thing, hopefully the virus-
How about now?
-and we can all go back to reality.
Right, right. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
We don't need anymore.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Irwin, would you raise your right hand, please, sir?
Yes.
Or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, please tell us your name and how to spell it.
Jay Irwin. Last name is I-R-W-I-N.
Thank you.
Sorry for the mix-up there. I'm on my phone. I was trying to go through the, I had my laptop earlier. Anyway, I'm back on the smartphone, so. Um, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to present the proposal for a new residential 80-foot-long, four-foot-wide residential pier on Lake Sammamish. It's for Michael and Shay Beal at 3219 East Lake Sammamish Shore Lane, southeast. I think we've been through a lot of that. It's about a approximately 13,400-square-foot lot. R4 zoning residential. And as you noted earlier, with quite a bit, approximately 120 feet of frontage along the lake with a new, a new single-family residence recently constructed on the site. The construction is wood, ACZA-treated, fur with galvanized steel pilings, through-flow grated decking, semi-light permeable. Approximately elevation 18 inches above the ordinary high-water mark, also with a new Bostah 6,000-pound boat lift and translucent canopy. Overall, water square footage is 440 square feet. So as far as bulk and dimensional, I think that's a bit self-explanatory in the Sammamish SMP and in the staff report as far as bulk-dimensional requirements designed to meet those regulations, setbacks and other zoning requirements. I think there's adequate space, obviously, on either side yard setback. And in keeping with the SMP that being residential pertinent, preferred use, water-dependent use along the shorelines of the state, construction to occur in approved fish and wildlife work windows on Lake Sammamish. And mitigation, of course, provided by Wetland Resources. Again, that's the self-mitigation portion. We've included the overall planting plan in keeping with other regulatory agencies as part of the overall, as more as informational purposes, right, for a city to review, to remain consistent among the agencies with jurisdiction along the shoreline. So I think that's about it on my end. Yes, we are, I don't know if we have to acknowledge that now, but the notice of decision via email is fine unless the Beals have an issue with that, which I doubt, but.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I will likely have some questions to ask, but I'm going to wait till everybody gets a chance to go around, and then we'll come back and see if people have addressed the things that I've made notes about. Um, let's see, let's then hear, well, did you want to have either Mr. Peterson or did Mr. Beal want to testify, do you know? Or are they sort of here to answer questions if necessary?
I had planned to primarily play support role and answer any outstanding questions that result from the conversation that we had. So I don't have anything official to add in the introduction, but I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Beal has seemingly gone offline, so I guess he doesn't wish to testify at this point either. Okay, then let's go to city staff. Is that going to be Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Okay, do you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. For the record, please tell us your name and how to spell it.
Oh, my first name is Jas Beer, J-A-S-V-E-S-N-V-e-ter-I-R. Last name is Singh, S-I-N-G-H.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And staff has no comments to add.
Okay, thank you. Is there any member of the public who is participating with us today? I think the answer's no, but I want to ask it just to be on the safe side. Ms. Beatty, do you have anybody on your screen showing the list of-
I can confirm. I can confirm that there's no one from the public showing up in the list of participants.
Thank you very much. Then I have a few questions. Let's see, Mr. Singh, did anybody file an appeal from the SEPA threshold determination?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin, according to city code, decisions on shoreline substantial development permits, and frankly, most other kinds of permits, are supposed to be issued within 120 net review days of the date the application was deemed complete. According to the staff report on page three, we are well beyond that. Is the applicant willing to waive that deadline? Your mic must have been off. Your mic is still off. Your mic is still off. Still off.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you but can't see you, but that's-
Well, sorry, what's happening is when it, what's happening is when I get muted, the organizer, I get muted by the organizer, and it does it on my smartphone, so I have to go back. This is really frustrating, but I know it's not, it's nobody's fault, but.
Okay, there are few enough of us here.
Yes, that's, yes, that's okay.
Don't mute him again. Just leave him on, okay?
Thanks. You might get some cat noise in here, but we'll see.
That's okay.
Okay.
I did one of these a while back, and the people next door decided to have their lawn mowed that day. Background noise of a high whirring sound. Okay, so you're willing to extend?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a minor picky kind of question, but it's a contradiction in the evidence, and I forget it clarified. Exhibits one and 14, one being the staff report and 14 being the notice of application, say that the application was complete on December the 13th of last year. Exhibit 15 says it was complete on December the 16th of last year. Could the staff tell me which of those two dates I should put in the decision as being that the application was complete?
13 is the correct date.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singh. Virtually every place in the record that talks about the boat canopy says that it's going to be made of translucent material. Then during the review process, city staff asked the applicant to submit specifications for the canopy material, and you did. And that's exhibit number 21. And it says that the material is opaque. Translucent and opaque are two very different concepts. Should I just disregard exhibit 21, the spec, material spec that says it's opaque?
Um.
Not the easy solution for this?
Yes. My apologies, yes.
I will disregard exhibit 21. What? I see, I have a recollection that because the level of Lake Sammamish is somewhat artificially controlled, at least as I understand it, that agencies have gotten together and decided on an elevation that will be considered the ordinary high-water mark around the lake. I have that as a recollection in the back of my brain that says that's been done. And I think all of us on the screen today know that the state law and WAC start out by saying that the ordinary high-water mark is this physical thing that you can see on each piece of property by seeing where aquatic ends and upland vegetation begins. And yet, if memory serves me, on Lake Sammamish, there is an elevation that uses the NAVD-88 datum that everybody puts out and says this is the ordinary high-water mark and the one that we're all supposed to use. For example, I believe Bellevue has adopted a certain number based on NAVD-88. And I think I've been told in previous hearings that it's NAVD-88 something or other, whatever the number is. The, let's see, one of the exhibits says that, where did I write it down? Exhibit five says that the Alton firm determined the ordinary high-water mark in October of 2016, but that document from Altman back in 2016 is not part of the record. And the exhibit five Altman document, I think it's, that's the one that's Altman. No, I guess that's the wetland resources document. But you folks said Altman did this in 2016. The reason I'm asking this is I'm trying to figure out when I look at the drawings and the plans, where the ordinary high-water mark is that we're talking about. I've got on my other computer screen exhibit number 11. That's the survey. And the survey has two dotted lines going across the line. One of the, they're out in the water. One of them is sort of an even curved line that's close to what they call on exhibit 11, the closing line. And then the other one is back more shoreward, more east. And it's a more irregular line, and it's labeled only as, pardon me for squinting, but it's a long ways away, it's small print, elevation 31.78. And it's not labeled, neither of those lines are labeled as ordinary high-water mark. And then when I look at, for example, exhibit 20, the latest of the three plans that's in the file, the depiction of the ordinary high-water mark on that exhibit is just gently curved line. It's not the more regular line. I went, there's a city document that was issued back in 2009 talking about ordinary high-water mark. And this is where I learned about the Bellevue one. It says that Bellevue's is 31.8 NAVD-88. The city at the time was considering 28.18 NGVD-29, those two different datum. And they're equal to the same, they're the same number, same height. It's just a different ways of measuring it. So I'm trying to figure out where is the ordinary high-water mark? That's the long end for a short question.
Okay, I think I can answer that. Jay Irwin here. And I'll ask, can everybody hear me?
Yes, I think we're all hearing you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think what is happening is you are correct, it refers- you are correct. It refers to a Regos diagram that was used in the project guide that the very the very beginning of this process is project guidance through the city and we had had an older drawing from Regos. And that makes sense, I guess, that it would not be part of the record. Well, it can be. I'm looking at it right now where the an older an older site plan and that is where the language. I guess I could backtrack here. The current, from my understanding, city of Samamish policy, as we've worked on a couple of these, a bit of a moving target, I gotta say, but it's to have it to have the ordinary high watermark field located by a qualified professional biologist and surveyed. It hasn't always been on that way. It historically has been either a an agreed upon elevation or properly marked, demarcated line of vegetation, ordinary hard watermark per the state's definition on the shoreline. But my my understanding is that was in Samamish currently, the best or the required way to do it is to have it survey or to have it field marked and surveyed. So that happened in the older Regos drawing. And that is what's used on the project plans. That 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 CAD file was used in our dock drawings. And that note is on the Regos plan from earlier on when they were working on the single family residence permitting on the shoreline. So it wasn't until the dock, I was contracted to do the permitting for the dock that we contracted with Wetland Resources and they in effect updated the the mitigation plan that had been used for the SFR earlier. So I can, I guess, to answer your question, when we submitted a copy of a survey as required by the code, I used, there was a a project survey, another, I'm not sure of the purpose, but the one that we use to answer your question was from earlier in the project guidance and I can get you that information. It's just some of it may be obsolete. It was like I said, it's from earlier permitting activity for the home. But it is what's required under my understanding for the dock permitting.
All right, let me can we put Mr. Peterson's mic on? Or you could do it. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. You're you say on the second page of exhibit five, that the OHWN was delineated by John Altman in October 2016 and surveyed shortly thereafter by Baylor or Bieler. I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Consulting is part of the building permit process. You probably remember putting that in your report.
I do.
Can can you testify? Well, let me ask you this. Do you have a copy of exhibit 11 available for you to look at on your screen?
I do.
Okay. Is that the Baylor survey that you're talking about?
I could which is
I'm asking Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, sorry.
For now, anyway.
So yes, I I believe, I mean, and I say that the basis of that is that the line work that shown for the ordinary high watermark appears to be appears to match the the CAD file that I had received by the project proponent, the applicant for the previous building permit. So I do believe that the ordinary high watermark line work biologically determining ordinary high watermark is is what we took and are showing from Baylor Consulting, which was reviewed and approved as part of a previous building permit.
I don't think I swore you in. That's my fault, not yours. Would you raise your right hand? I'll give you a a unique oath. You swear that the testimony you've already presented and that any testimony subsequently presented has been to be the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. So which of the of the lines on the Baylor survey is the line that Altman called out as the OHWN?
So I can try to provide sort of a a brief and messy history of ordinary high watermark delineation requirements on Lakes of Mamish. And and so maybe this will provide a little bit of context for what you were you were talking about in the in the original question. And and so obviously, it's it's important to waterfront property owners where the ordinary high watermark is as it is the basis for where they can develop on property. So a lot of time when you want to do determining at various levels of government, including Army Corps of Engineers, you know, City of Bellevue, Navy, then City of Kirkland got in on that. Anyway, so the the determination was, well, we understand ordinary high watermarks to be dynamic line that would change annually based on, you know, specific geographical location, et cetera. And so in attempt to provide, and this is me paraphrasing, that my understanding of the history of how we got here, is that in an attempt to provide a standard or regulatory certainty for applicants, City of Samamish was accepting a survey based ordinary high watermark as a submittal quality documentation for demonstrating where the ordinary high watermark was. Now, I think over, you know, as as city staff has turned over over the years, the various interpretations of what is appropriate for determining your watermark. For that reason, City of Samamish, prior to the the current administration of the planning department, had accepted both a biologically determined ordinary high watermark, which is which is based on WAC and and as you stated, requires, you know, an understanding where the regular presence of waters creates a mark upon the land with respect to vegetation. I think that's sort of a paraphrase of WAC. And so that's the base of biologically determined ordinary high watermark. Now, I think at some point over time, City of Samamish planning staff had decided that they would prefer biologically derived ordinary high watermark as the basis for determining shoreline setbacks. And so we've gone from what's typically the applicant's preference in the interest of regulatory certainty to go with the survey based elevation ordinary high watermark to moving towards a biologically determined ordinary high watermark. And it appears from, I did a public information request for the building permit process that resulted in in the single family residence being permitted as there had been reviewed and approved in ordinary high watermark determination for that project. And it appears that it was a biologically that that Altman Oliver conducted biologically determined ordinary high watermark delineation on the property, which was then subsequently surveyed by Baylor Consulting. And you're correct, that doesn't appear in the record, although I would say it is public record under building permit. Oh. 201803977 is my guess, so don't hold me back. Let me get the real one for you.
It's in the staff report.
Okay.
Don't worry. You mean the one for this property?
No. For the property, it's BLD 201803977 is the building permit that was the the basis for Altman coming out and doing that ordinary high watermark delineation work, which was reviewed and approved by the city.
Okay, and that would be the more uniform line, the one that's further west on the Baylor survey as opposed to the one that's labeled as 31.78?
Elevation 31.78. This site plan is the first time that I've seen that elevation line called out. I I had been previously operating under the assumption that there is a dashed line that on on this on the Beal lot, there's a dashed line that appears to intersect with two property corners that are waterward or closest to Lakes of Mamish.
Okay, good. I I will not ask for further documentation of that. That's a good enough explanation under oath to solve the dilemma that I saw. Thank you. Mr. Singh, what's the shoreline's environmental designation? Is it shoreline residential or urban conservancy or something else?
Oh, it's residential.
Shoreline residential. Thank you. A few questions from the staff report, just some clarifications if we could. On page three, the next to the last paragraph. Let me know when you're there.
Yes, um, yeah.
Okay, the third line in talking about what's adjoining the property to the north and the south says to the north is, quote, "common property type two," unquote. What can you explain what that is? I I have not a clue what common property type two is.
So, yes, so that was under.
I was just gonna say, I know what I saw when I was there and I know there was a name on the gate, but it doesn't say common property type two, so I I have clarification.
So I really don't know what that property is, but that was listed on the King County quarter section map. It was named as a common type two property.
Okay, did you go out and see the property?
I did not, sir.
Okay. Mr. Irwin or Mr. Peterson or Mr. Beal? I'm assuming that all three of you went out and saw the property. Can any of you tell me what the name is on the gate that leads into this common property type two?
I don't know.
Looks like he wants to answer. Let me swear. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to offer in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
It's a, and forgive me if I don't get the name exactly right, but it's the Waverly Hills Beach Club. It's a property that's owned by the neighborhood that is up the hill.
Okay, thank you. That's the same name I saw. Waverly spelled W A V E R L Y, I think it was.
I believe that's correct.
Yes. Yeah. On page I'm I'm a little confused by the third paragraph on page four. To be honest, this ultimately doesn't make any difference, but I don't understand why the city is citing a particular section of the WAC. This third paragraph is talking about essentially, at least the first half of it is talking about the need for a substantial development permit for the dock. And the gist of what it's trying to get at is that the value of the dock exceeds the threshold, the value of the the cost of the dock exceeds the threshold that's in the state law for an exemption. But I'm I'm at a complete loss as the staff is citing WAC 173-27-0402 subsection A. In the first place, the staff cites that and says that the value of the dock is greater than $5,000 pursuant to that WAC section. Well, if you read that WAC section and I've got it up on my screen, that $5,000 value is not the correct value anymore because that code section says that starting in 2007, the State Office of Financial Management or Fiscal Management, whatever it's called, was to update that number based on inflation every five years. So it's been updated at least three times, I guess, since then. So the $5,000 number wouldn't be right in the first place. But more importantly, I don't think that's the right section that we should be looking at. Subsection 2H is relating to the exemption for construction of a dock. And if you get down to 2H sub 2, which is the dock in freshwater and then has two parts, one of them's replacing an old dock and one's for building a new dock, and you go to the new dock and it says $10,000 is the threshold. So I believe that's the section we should look at. Now, according to the JAR per permit application, the value of the dock is like 25,000. So it's not clearly not going to be exempt, but I'm just I I think your your code section is completely wrong and I would like to give you a chance to disagree with me if you think I'm wrong.
Oh, the staff agrees.
Okay. And then bottom of that page, well, near the bottom of the page, there's a section entitled Analysis Comprehensive Plan. Second paragraph. It's one long, the whole paragraph is one long sentence. I think you've got a double negative near the end of this that you don't mean. Let's see, it says installation of a boat lift and canopy as proposed for these goals and policies in that the dock will enable greater recreational use of Lakes of Mamish while simultaneously ensuring that the shoreline recreational services does not result in no net loss of shoreline ecological functions. I don't think you mean that. I think you mean that ensuring that the shoreline recreational services results in no net loss. Because if it doesn't result in no net loss, then it means it's resulting in a net loss. At least that's the way I I agree. You're not trying to say that this dock is resulting in a net loss of of shoreline ecological values, are you? Okay. And in the very last paragraph, you paraphrase, I think, from WAC 173-26-231, a state WAC regarding new pier or dock construction excluding docks accessory to single family homes. Well, if it excludes them, then that section's totally irrelevant to Mr. Beal, Mr. and Mrs. Beal's dock, right? To their house.
Mr. Hearing Examiner, you're breaking up. I didn't hear that part.
I'm sorry. The the WAC in the last paragraph on page four. I guess my signal is kind of weak. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. That WAC 173-26-231 apparently points to new pier or dock construction excluding docks accessory to single family homes. And it would seem to me if that section excludes docks accessory to single family homes and this is a dock accessory to a single family home, then that section has absolutely no relevance to this application.
Yes, the staff agrees.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of questions about the mitigation plan. My impression, bottom line, my impression is that the dock is not going to disturb any upland area and that therefore vegetation enhancement area and shore vegetation mitigation is not required for the dock. May be required for the house, may have been part of the permits for the house. But my impression is it's not required for the dock. My understanding is that some state agencies may require mitigation for the dock, but there's nothing in the S, in, in the, the uh, Sammamish code that would require that. And I believe that's the position the city has taken for years. Uh, it has said that the dock, used to say in the staff reports rather routinely, that the dock criteria in O five O um, are self mitigating. That if you did everything that they said, you didn't have to do anything else. Um, I, I don't see that in the current reports, but staff, prior staff used to put that in rather routinely. So my impression is that you don't have to do any mitigation for the shoreline permit, for the dock. Condition four, as recommended by the staff, specifically says that the two trees in the mitigation plan don't have to be planted. But the mitigation plan is for, I think it's three trees and two shrubs. So does, what is the city saying about mitigation for the dock? I don't care about mitigation for the house. That's a different thing. It's not my, my jurisdiction. And I don't care about mitigation that Fish and Wildlife or Army Corps of Engineers would require because they're doing that under their regulatory authority, not under the shoreline authority. I just want to get clear in my little pea picking brain, what mitigation is required for this dock?
Oh, yes, Mr. Hearing Examiner. So no medic mitigation is required for the dock.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. And page seven. Okay, that's taken care of. That's been taken care of. And that's been taken care of. Um, and you just answered that. No. Exhibit eighteen. Exhibit eighteen is The Wetland Reconnaissance by Altman Oliver. And on page two, or rather on page one, says there's a small rock bulkhead along the shoreline. A simple question, is there still a small rock bulkhead along the shoreline? Since I couldn't see it. Anybody know what, is it still there? I just don't want to describe the properties having a rock bulkhead if it's not there. It's a simple, it's not a loaded question. It's just, is it there? Nobody knows? Mr. Beal, do you know if there's a small rock bulkhead in front of your property?
I, I know. I was gonna let Neil, I'm, I'm trying to let Neil do his job, so I'll let him come up to you.
Okay, Mr. Peterson, is there a small rock bulkhead there?
Yeah, on the date of my site investigation, which was in June of a year ago, uh, there was, there was a small rock bulkhead uh, along Lakes of Mamish.
If I say that there is a rock bulkhead there, Mr. Beal, will that still be a true statement? Mr. Peterson's testimony is a year old.
Yes, that is a true statement.
Okay, thank you. And we've talked about that. And we've talked about that. I think those are the only questions that I had. You've extended that and there was no secret appeal. I do believe those were the only questions that I had. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Irwin, does the applicant wish to add any additional testimony?
I think the only thing that, well, I saw, I don't know, I, I don't know if Mr. Beal has any additional testimony, but the, the dock will be eighteen inches above the high watermark and that's on page four. Uh, first paragraph on page four.
Oh, in the staff report?
Yes.
Oh, instead of seventeen?
Correct.
Should be eighteen. Okay. Thank you.
Other than that, to my knowledge, no.
Okay, well, I did have one additional question that I forgot to ask. Uh, the staff on page seven of, of that report that you were just looking at recommends approval subject to seven conditions. Uh, do you and your client have any objection or any concerns regarding those conditions? Anything you want to talk to me about relating to them?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singh, does the city have any additional testimony?
Oh, sir.
Oh, okay. Uh, either one of you want to offer a closing statement?
No.
No? Okay. Well then, I think that this concludes our hearing. Uh, let me just, I, I guess I should ask, do any of you have any documents that if we'd been doing this in person, you would have submitted to me during the hearing that you still want me to get before I do my decision?
No.
No? Okay, very good. Uh, then this will conclude the open record hearing on the application of, well, let me ask the, Mr. Beal, the, the application was filed apparently by your wife. Would you like it listed in both your names as the applicants being uh, Michael and Shay Beal or Shay and Michael Beal? Or do you just want me to leave it in her name?
I, I mean, it, it doesn't matter, I guess. She's the boss. Um, so we
Okay, and I, I, would it be correct to say that the house is under construction?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so this will conclude the open record hearing of the application of, we'll just leave it, Shay Beal uh, under file number SSDP two zero one nine dash zero zero five eight five. It is eleven oh six AM. Uh, we are adjourned. And uh, we're not leaving the record open, so this is going to end it. I'm now going to click leave and that will take me out of it. If you folks need to stay together for anything like sharing email addresses with Lita, um, you may certainly hang around, but I'm going to say goodbye and um, I usually say drive safely wherever you're going from. I think we're all, so uh, stay safe.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I guess Jasveer or Avril, I, I would like to talk with you about uh, maybe getting the building permit going.
Okay, um, one moment. Um, Lita, should I stop the record, the recording now?
Uh, yes, if you're, if, if everything's off the record right now, you should stop it. Also, um, Jasveer, do you have everybody's email address?
Uh, I think I have Jay and Michael and